He's muted.
For, I would say four years. Um, and yeah, I have, I worked for State Farm for a while. Uh, the last job that I had, I worked for the Vango Immersive Experience. I started off as gas services supervisor, worked my way up to the general manager position. Um, and we're just leaving that. So, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm excited to work with you guys.
Ms. Faison, what would you say is one of your major strengths? Like, one of the strengths that you have and, and many people will tell you.
Um, well, like you said earlier, I am a people person. I can talk, talk, talk and talk. I would say that. Um, I've, I've always been personable. Um, my, both of my parents are extroverts, so it just carried over.
Very good. Does the council, Ms. Chester or Ms. Turberville have any, um, uh, questions? Or would you like to just introduce yourself, um, how long you've been on the council? And, um, a great time she's gonna have here in Edmiston.
Do you want me to go first?
Mr. Johnson, um, Turberville, either one.
So, welcome. And just for my clarification, sorry, is your first name Daria?
Yes.
Okay, okay, got it. Um, and I guess I'm also curious how you heard about the position? And what was it that attracted you to the position?
Well, I, I, I don't, I live close to the area. I'm, I'm always around here because you know, three brothers that was up the street. So, I, I, I saw an ad for it on Indeed and I was like, I would like that position, please. And so I applied for it. And when I heard that, I, I told my parents and most of my parents were like, yes! So, um, yeah, I was really excited.
Good. That's all right. All right, Mr. Johnson, did you have anything? Uh, my thing is covering you. Oh, I see you're unmuted. Can you hear me?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, welcome, uh, Daria, welcome to the town of Edmiston. And, um, you probably see me a lot because I'm in and out more now. I mean, right now I'm going through a little bit of complications, but it's not that bad. And I'm used to being around the office, so you probably see a lot of me.
Yeah, I think I have, I think so.
Already, huh? All right.
I can just introduce myself, Mayor, if you want me to do that.
Yes, yes.
Okay, hi, Daria, I'm Sarah Turberville and I represent Word Two with Mr. Johnson. And, um, I look forward to working with you and everything that you're gonna bring to the role.
Very good. Hi, Daria, guess who I am? Daria is more than a personal, you know, personal people, more than a person people. Um, actually, the chief had to come in and ask us, were we interviewing her or having a party in the backyard? Within fifteen minutes of starting the interview with her, it, it seemed like I had known her all my life. Uh, and hopefully we made you feel at ease too during the interview. I'm, I'm real excited for you. I think we're gonna have a lot of fun. And I'm glad you had that preschool childcare behind, you know? Because as you can tell, it'll work right in your favor with all of us. That's a good point.
Right.
Oh, we, we, I got, I got one, one question. Um, you said three brothers, you talking about Thursday night?
Uh-oh, you wanna know if she can sing?
Yeah, I do sing, actually, I do. That's the hobby that I have. Uh, you know they're on Thursdays? Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, I've been singing for a while. So, that was crazy that y'all brought that up. That's so rad.
I know, I know. Well, Mr. Johnson's been around, so. All right. Well, thank you so much.
Daria, we'll use you for singing if you, uh, at some of our events, if you want to do that, you'll have opportunity.
Well, we're looking for talent, Daria.
Team, always recruiting, always. Very good. Do your, do your sisters sing too? And if they do, we can have a trio.
Actually, yes. My sister, she plays piano. I have another sister that plays guitar. Both my, my, my dad sings.
Oh, so Jackson Five?
Losing my ears. We've got our talent for the next festival coming up. My dad says that all the time. He's like, I could Joe Jackson if you want. We could Joe Jackson if that's what you like.
Do you know about the Partridge Family?
Yes.
Oh, you do? Okay.
Yeah.
So, so wouldn't it be the, the, the Faison Five?
My mother, she can play the tambourine, but that's it.
Oh, that's good. You know, everybody can play the tambourine. It's an art.
Yeah, it's in the wrist.
Yes, it is, it is. All right. Well, thank you. So, um, you can, you don't have to stay on the, um, in the meeting if you don't care to, um, but you can if you'd like to. And that's anytime, um, we have our meetings, if you care to. But, um, I don't wanna make you hang in there because we're really gonna do two meetings. Our, our, um, work session, where we kinda work things out to get the flow of how we're going to conduct our, um, town meeting at seven o'clock. So, it's just a time for us to refresh and, um, see where we all are on certain issues. And then that way, when we have our town meeting, it just runs smoothly and we don't keep people all night long.
Yeah, I would like to stay though. I just wanna see how everything goes.
Okay, absolutely. And then when Ms. Romero gets on, um, we can just go ahead and introduce her. Um, Chief, you think you might, um, um, she, she probably did try directly through the meeting ID and the pass code?
Yeah, I'm sure she did. I sent the same information to Daria and Anna. And, and I said she was gone.
The ID and pass code.
All of the information that was in the email that Rod put out, so they could see, um, you know, the pass code and all the other information. But I had a problem, uh, getting in as well. It took me ten different times, but.
Even when you went directly from the Zoom, not the link? When you go to Zoom and it asks you to put in the meeting ID?
Yeah, it would say invalid ID. And I did that three or four times.
Yeah, because, well, yeah, all right. She has your number?
Yes, she has my number.
Okay, all right, cool. So, let's, um, move on. Um, so we're gonna review our agenda, uh, for our town meeting. And the first item, of course, is going to be about the beehives. And, um, tonight we will approve it if there aren't any questions or concerns or anything like that. Nope, 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 nope. All right, and we're gonna be able to have some beehives, um, in our residential areas. I think just a few residents will be very happy to know that. So, um, the next item is our, uh, minutes. And there are no questions about the minutes. We didn't misquote anybody. And so then we'll move on to the speed monitoring system. So, um, I just want the chief to highlight, um, where we are on that with the speed, um, monitoring, equipment and training and so on. Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I sent a message out last week, Tuesday, March the first. I indicated in the message that, uh, the police department staff met with our representative for, um, our automated speed system. His name is Mike Phelan. And the company's former name was Opta Traffic. And they are now referred to as Alu- Ultimate, Ultimate, A-L-T-U-M-I-N-T. And basically, he just gave the group all the steps in the process to get the system, uh, up and running for the town of Edmiston. And basically, I'll just shout out two or three of the things. Uh, step one in the process is the company does what they call a traffic study. And that study makes the determination as to how often speeders pass along the area that we are asking that they set up the speed, uh, monitoring system. And so, when the traffic study is concluded, they'll send us the results. Um, step two was to develop a town ordinance for the automated speed system. And, uh, uh, our town attorney has drafted it. I hope everybody had a chance to look at it. She sent it to us, I think, was that Monday, Rod? Um, under ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash O R dash O two. And it just highlights all of the law as it relates to having a speed monitoring system. Once we have that and they finished the traffic study, then, um, Ultimate pushed together a contract. And the contract is for three years or four years or whatever we decide is appropriate, uh, under the circumstances. And I think he said generally this contract for services is for three calendar years. Um, we have to advertise in the newspaper, on our website, on any other medium that the, uh, town of Edmiston have, that we're going to have a speed monitoring system. And we have to do that thirty days before the process starts. Um, each citation issued through this system will have a forty dollar, uh, fee associated with it. And then there are other late fees that can be attached, like a, a twelve dollar late fee for not, uh, paying it within thirty days.
Chief.
Yes, Mayor.
Um, Ms. Chester has a quick question, um, before you go any further.
Can I ask a question about, um, it looked like what Sue Ellen sent over outlined where these are allowed to be used? And it looked like it's like within a however much distance of a school or an institution of higher learning. And then it said a highway within, uh, like a residential or commercial district. And so, do we have, like, will we be able to use this within Edmiston? Or would it just be maybe that stretch of Kennelworth? I just.
That, that paragraph that she put in the ordinance is a part of the language in the law.
Yeah.
So, the same language here, whether you have, um, uh, schools, whether you have schools or a highway with a speed limit is, uh, thirty-five miles an hour. So, the first half of that paragraph doesn't apply to Edmiston. But the second half of it does with respect to a highway thirty-five miles an hour in a, uh, community. So, that's where that falls. All that language is language right out of the law.
Right.
That was.
Is Kennelworth a highway?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a state highway.
That's the only stretch, though, that we have?
Yes, um, and I was just trying to think. Yeah, that's the only one. And they, our vendor, looks around to see if there are other places where we could possibly do it. Some other municipalities have several of them. For example, Seat Pleasant. Seat Pleasant has about at least fifteen cameras. And, uh, they're all a state highway. And so they have the speed monitoring system and the red light systems. And they have seven or eight schools as well. So, you know, we just happen not to have a school that is within one quarter mile, uh, of the, the town.
And so, will this company, in a, in a fairer way, like in an objective way, not a self-interested way, figure out whether we have enough kind of distance that where this would be operational and we're likely to get enough infractions to balance out what we might be paying them for the, their services and maintenance of the system?
Well, um, number one, there is no fee for services per se. If the, um, if the fee for the citation is forty dollars, they get twelve of the forty dollars. If we don't have any, they don't get any. And so it's predicated on how many forty dollar citations are actually recorded through the system. And again, again, it's a long Kennelworth Avenue because Kennelworth Avenue has the criterion that was set in the law. It's a highway, speed limit's thirty-five miles an hour. And, uh, so if we had a road somewhere that was twenty-five, like Decatur Street, you couldn't use it because it doesn't satisfy the language of it.
And I guess that was my concern. We have a very small amount of length of qualifying distances in our town.
Yes, that's right. Okay.
Mr. Barnes and then Ms. Turberville?
Just a note on that fee, on the fee, Hillary. Um, the law says specifically that the contractor's fee may not be contingent on a per-ticket basis on the number of citations issued or paid. So, when, when the chief brings the contract back to you, the fee that will be in that contract will be something related to having the equipment, not per ticket. So, um, the law does not allow that. And Sue Ellen pointed that out specifically. Um, and she's dealt with, uh, Altamont on that issue in the past. So, she's fully aware of what has to be done there. But it is, there'll be some kind of fee, but I'm, I'm sure Chief will know when that, when they get the contract, what that fee will, will be.
And so will the company help make an assessment of whether we're likely to have enough revenue to cover their costs? Or is that something that, because they have like an interest in this, we would wanna look in some more objective way to assess that?
Well, the traffic study is the impetus behind having the program in the first place. If there were to be some highway where there were no speeders over a period of time, say they do the study over seven days, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And there was, you know, five percent or three percent of those traveling the roadway were speeding, then they would say that roadway is not a good measure for them to do the program. And they would say, they wouldn't recommend we do it. So, the study kicks it off, right? And we know that we have a challenge because the officers go out and run radar on Kennelworth Avenue from the forty-two hundred block of Kennelworth going northbound up to the, the line, which I think is the fifty-three hundred block of Kennelworth Avenue. So, we know that there, there's speed back and forth. Yes.
So, so I'm just trying to square what, what Rod said, Chief, and what you were saying about the fee. So, so then is it not a, a twelve dollar per ticket? That would be, like, that actually is not what would be permitted by the law? Okay.
That's correct.
Okay, so, and Chief, you were saying that typically you would enter into like a three-year contract with one of these service providers?
That's what our vendor reported during our meeting.
Okay, um, I'm, I'm wondering, just because I, just because it is a very tiny stretch of land on which this, in which we can do this. Um, and so I just want us to think about if, like, we could see a decrease in the number of tickets over time, right? As people start to get familiar with that being a stretch where there's a speed camera. Um, so I just want us to just make sure that we're not gonna be locked into something that is gonna be a revenue loser rather than a revenue maker over the, those three years.
Right, you know.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was asking. I guess that's what the, my questions were around that same concern. That we have a very small stretch where this is even allowable? And whether we would get ourselves locked into paying more than we're generating the fee?
Right. And so one of the things I think Sue Ellen helps us with is the language, uh, in the contract and how it would benefit us over time. And so we haven't actually seen the contract language. And once we take a look at the language, then all of us will make a decision about whether it's beneficial for us to have the program in the town. And I mean, you know, several years ago when we started the red light, you don't know, it fluctuates time of day, um, the weather, all these other factors. So, the, the study will kick it off and then we'll see what the language in the contract says. Clearly, if we're not comfortable with the language, then we'll propose that we do something different.
And just again, like, the, the vendor is the one that's gonna do the study? Or is there some objective other study that we're gonna rely on?
The vendor does the study.
Okay.
Yeah, I think what Hillary's wondering is like, would the vendor ever come back and say that you don't need our services, right? So, um, so I, I wonder.
Well, it's been my experience, uh, Sarah, that they have. Um, I've done, you know, interacted with these folks quite a bit over the last ten years or so. And we had a couple of locations we asked them to look at. And after about a month, they came back and they said, uh, Chief, it would not be feasible, feasible for us to, um, put the machines out because there's not enough traffic. And traffic violations justify its existence. And so then we didn't do it. So, that happens too, uh, a company by the name of Red Speed.
But that's not this company?
No, no, this is Opta Traffic. There, there's several of these companies who provide these, uh, these services, so.
This is the company, Hillary, that's done our, um, red light camera for a number of years. Uh, we've had a long-term contract with them. And, and you all know, because you see it every year in the budget, as the chief, just to reinforce what the chief said, um, the, the revenue goes up and down, up and down. The, the, we think that we're gonna, by putting it there, we're gonna get people to know it's there and they're gonna reduce the usage. That's, it's a negative revenue source and we hope that it's gonna go away. But unfortunately, it doesn't. It goes, um, you know, it just varies based on, like he said, the time of day and the, uh, week, day of the week and, and when, when it happens. So, uh, I would hope it'd be different with the speed camera, but, maybe. But in terms of like Sarah says, that people get onto it, they would know it's there and they would quit driving fast and then there'd be less tickets. But, um, you know, I guess who knows until we see what happens.
Also, don't, I mean, is the point of this, money or to make things safer?
But having the red light camera there, the, if people know it's there and they still go through it and run it. So, I, I don't think, you know, speeders are gonna, they're, they're gonna speed no matter what. Um, and the ones that are coming out, you know, from DC into Maryland or the ones leaving this area, going back to Virginia or DC, they're gonna blow through it because most of them are gonna say, I won't be back. I'm not paying that ticket. And Mr. Johnson, you just mentioned even those who are traveling from out of town. Is that what you were saying?
Yeah, you got a lot of out of towners that go up and down Kennelworth Avenue that be speeding too.
And, you know, this is the new, uh, legislation, um, that has been passed. So, before, yeah, it was, um, the school, well, it still is, if you were in a certain distance from the schools. Um, and that's the only reason you could have this, um, speed camera installed. But now, um, since it has changed, it now allows us to be able to have more than just the, um, red light camera, which we were talking about having one at Buchanan, I believe. But, um, this way we get to have a speed camera. And yeah, it is a roll of dice. Um, but, hmm, I think you come out of, uh, okay, most cases. Um, the other thing is with all of these companies, um, every municipality, I believe, is trying to jump on this to see if they have a, a state highway because they haven't had a school within a certain distance. And there are speeders, and we know, I know for sure, Kennelworth Avenue, um, there are speeders. Um, I'm sure it's gonna catch, um, one or two of you, uh, going down Kennelworth Avenue. But, um, uh, it's just each one of these companies, um, know that there is skepticism about, you know, the study and, and, and whether it's gonna be for them. Um, but, uh, I, I don't know how much they can be dishonest. Well, I know people can be dishonest, but I don't know how much dishonest they can be. But we do have the opportunity after seeing the study, saying, okay, it's enough or it's good. It looks like it'll work out for us or not. So, um, that was just my two cents on it. And, um, for this company, I, I, I know, um, one of their legal, um, representatives that works with Ultima, Ultima. So, um, I think it's a good, good deal for now, especially with the study. And I think we were even talking, we were talking about that, um, in our department head, um, meeting about a study. But I think, I believe they're just gonna pretty much stick with, are they gonna pretty much stick with Kennelworth Avenue area? Or will they, um, go around town or you're not sure, Chief?
Well, it has to be a state highway, so that eliminates all of our side streets, you know? But they have a box that they set up at some point, say, you know, half a mile from the intersection of Decatur and Kennelworth. And they track the number of cars that cross this wire and the speed. And then it's, you know, it's data-driven. Then they'll say to us, during this seven-day study, ten thousand cars passed through and, you know, six thousand of them were exceeding the speed limit by twelve miles an hour above the speed limit. And so we recommend, and then we'll look at it, we'll make a determination, then we can, we can move forward.
Cool. Okay. Any more questions? Okay, so we're gonna look to move forward with that. Council. We're looking to move forward with the, um, speed monitoring system. You can nod your head or tell me yay. Is that what we're gonna do? All right, cool. Um, and the next item, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
And the next item is our, um, infamous mosquito spraying that occurs every year. And that's supposed to start May twenty-fifth through September thirtieth. And I believe, Mr. Barnes, last year, um, I think there, there's always question as to who this company is, where they are, what time do they spray? But, um, last year you were able to, and I think previous years, you were able to contact them and say, um, There's a high number of mosquitoes, um, I'm getting complaints in this area or that area. You were able to do that. Last year about high area.
It is the state of Maryland that, um, coordinates this through Prince George's County. And so it's the, it's employees. Uh, doing the spraying. They do it late at night when they try to, I'll make sure that, you know, there's not very many people out and about. And there is an opportunity to, to complain or to, um. You know, some people don't like the spray period. Uh, we have folks that. Don't want the spray happening in the air because they have their windows open or whatever it might be, but.
I think Comer Manor, um. I think they stopped the spraying, yeah. I, I don't think that's lies for us, you know?
And I know lots of people are doing private spraying also in the community. You see the signs that say Joe Mosquito, I believe is the. One you see the most, but there's other companies that do it. We even actually talked to. One, a couple of those companies when, when the county suspended the year of, of the COVID. Activity. So it's good to have them back doing this. I think it is helpful, but I, I guess that's a question.
I think though, um. Now that I mentioned Comer Manor, I think we probably should look into. Not to stop it, but if we should stop it, what are the other, um, alternatives? Like what, what's a suggestion to the residents? This is your own spraying. This is what you can do and this is the product that you can use. Just because we are environmentally conscious here in Edmiston. So that's probably where we'll move, but. Don't take it away. We can't take it away and not have any other, you know, resort, so.
Great, uh, project for our, um, intern, our, our summer intern to work on. Researching alternatives that we could promote through a green environment, um, related.
Part of eco districting. Ms. Chester.
I was just gonna say that. With the people keeping bees, I think that, um, the, it does make a, I mean, it's not great for the bees period, but I think it makes a difference if it's done. Um, within hours when they're normally like in their hive and not out and about as much.
Okay, good. I'll let them know.
Okay. Right, guys, um, the next discussion is concerning our rec center and COVID protocols. Just, uh, Mr. Barnes and I have been talking about it and I know that, um. Miss Avery, Mr. Barnes, um, and Christiana, they were getting calls as to when are we gonna open? The rec center and if we're gonna open it. So, uh, Mr. Barnes, you wanna talk about that?
Yeah, I think that, um, our calls have, have increased significantly in the last few weeks, um, you know, for the longest period of time. People pretty well understood and knew that the masks were required indoors and, and, um, social distancing and it was. A cumbersome and they understood why we kept the, the, uh, center closed. But now that the mask mandates have been lifted, um, by the county, uh, even the emergency was, um, declaration from the county was lifted today. It seems prudent that we should go ahead and move forward with setting up a time to start, uh, renting out the rec center again. Um, for, for activities in advance. Obviously, in the agreement they sign, we can't hold everybody harmless, but. Um, in the agreement that whoever's renting it, uh, Sue Ellen puts in the appropriate language, we talked about that before. And then, uh, we post signs to not only encourage, um, vaccination, but also to encourage. Um, mask and distancing if applicable, um, to that, but, um. I think that if we focused on trying to start up by, uh, April first, um, we could accomplish that, but that's up to you.
Uh, we also talked about, Mr. Barnes, um, whether to increase. The fees based on additional cleaning. Did you mention that? I kinda have my mic down. I mean, my speaker down.
We did talk about that at the last time we had this discussion, whether we wanted to do something like that or if we wanted. A professional cleaner to, um, potentially. Go in after each, uh, use versus, I mean, obviously we'll rely on the. The person renting it to clean back, but do we want somebody then to follow right in behind them and, and do thorough cleaning too? And if we do, do we want to just add that fee right on to, um, what we charge for the rental?
I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson, go ahead.
I said, if you add an additional fee on, that means they're not gonna clean when they done.
Well, they, they don't get their deposit back if they, if it isn't in the same condition it is when they left.
No, okay.
Uh, to me, the clean is gonna be to sanitize, not to clean up the part of your mess. I say we add that fee to it and. And if they don't clean up, then they lose their deposit and they're put on a list of never renting it to them again.
Correct. That's what we do.
And, um, it can be a, I don't think that we should charge the full price of the cleaning. Once we get some pricing, um, because that would make the rental. Way above. We're talking probably a hundred and fifty over, right?
No, I think the, the cleaning that we had before down at the rec center was like eighty dollars a, a week. If we can keep it in that, that area, then say it's at eighty, that's a rental of two thirty. So I don't think two thirty is too far out of line. I mean. Places are more expensive than that, um, to rent, so.
I just didn't want like a hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree with you. We'll, we'll find, we'll, we'll find somebody to do it, you know, or the guys will go down and do it, but, um. If we have to, to keep the price down, because we don't want it to become absurd.
Right. And that's the whole reason we brought the pricing down.
Yeah, now, wanna use it.
I, I can't remember if we had reopened the rec center at all during the last two years during the pandemic. Okay, so I wonder if we could have Sue Ellen take a close look at the contract then that. People sign so that we can ensure that we're covered for like no liability if people get sick. And also covered for sudden cancellations if there's a change in public health circumstances. Either in the county or that we as a, as a municipality elect that to, to go back to more restrictive. Conditions.
Yeah, she, she's done that a little bit and so now we just need to go back and make sure it matches, um, because we put on hold. That it got severe again and then everything went. The other direction, so we didn't move forward, but, um, yes, I agree with you a hundred percent, Sarah. That's, that's important. We can't, we can't, uh, get every participant that intends the party to, with a whole harmless, but. Obviously, the person that, that rents it, um, can sign off on that.
Yeah, well, we never would have been able to do that on any kind of liability issue.
Right.
Before, so, okay, cool. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Good, good input there. Anything else for that?
We'll move forward then, uh, April first, we'll start, um, taking calls and, and reservations, so. Once, and I'll make sure that we have that agreement in place and, um, the signs and, uh, of course, I know, um. Pastor Carter is gonna be probably disappointed, but, um, he's enjoyed greatly this last two years.
Broken it down, so.
I'm sure he knows that that time was coming at some point.
Uh, mayor.
Yes.
Also, if you remember last, uh, spring, I dusted off the security plan. For the recreation center, who would work, how they would work and all of those things. And so what I'm gonna do is, uh, in the next day or so, I'm just gonna send it around. That everybody might take a look at it and then we reach a conclusion that it serves our purpose in this. In this climate and then we can, um, put it in place for those who've been the, uh, facility. Cause we have to provide them with a copy of it, I believe.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
And what about the town hall?
You mean as far as meetings?
Yeah, well, it says town hall and recreation center.
Oh, on the agenda. Oh, okay, okay. I thought you were reading the contract, huh? It's in the contract. Well, that's something for, that's something for us to decide. Um, I mean, I can take comments. As far as when we are looking to, um, get back to in-person, um, meetings. I don't know that anybody is jumping and ready to, um, go back yet. And I believe that we are still effective. Via Zoom, but if there is a desire of the majority to come back. Uh, we can just set a date as to when we will come back. Um, I don't know if, um. That's the case of any of our council members. And, uh, Mr. Johnson, I think, um, you can go ahead and express, uh, where your, your thoughts are.
I mean, I think we should have been back in, be truthful. I think we both probably might, like, one of the only municipalities that's not in, into, uh, in Preston Town Hall meeting.
No, you know, no. I mean, there are some. I know Bladensburg is. Um, that's for sure. Some may be doing a hybrid, which, um, that wouldn't be a bad idea as far as hybrid. If, 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 um. If there's an issue or struggle with the, the, uh, computer, um, you could always come to the town hall. All council members are welcome to come. But I, um, I, for me personally, um, I'm okay with the Zoom right now. Because the protocols have just changed and we don't know the direction or what's going to happen as yet. The masks have just, um, are just starting to come off. In Prince George's County, um, in the schools, they still have the mask. So, um, for me, uh, waiting just a bit, uh, is, is, is good for me. But, um, I will go with the majority. If the majority wants to return. You know, it's not, I, I don't mind. But I think for, for safety for right now, um, we should probably stay Zoom for a little bit longer, counsel.
I'm good the way it is right now.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate Mr. Johnson bringing this up because. I too desire to return to some normalcy sooner than later, as I'm sure everyone does. But, you know, I, I do worry about, I know Betsy has a, has a little one that can't be vaccinated. I do too, and. There's just some acute concerns that I think some of us have, but. I wonder if there might be a way though for Mr. Johnson to be able to come to the town hall and. Yeah, I think that's right. I think that's a great idea, mayor, in the interim. And then I would, you know, maybe we keep this as a recurring. Issue for us to address every month and make a decision.
Absolutely. We can put it on the agenda every, every month, talk about it, see where we stand.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I, I'm sort of fortunate that I, I don't have people around me that are. In sort of categories that can't get vaccinated or have, you know, complicated health risks or anything. And so I feel like for me, I will just. Sort of follow others. I don't, you know, I, I don't, I'll let other people who have these more significant considerations lead.
Yeah, see, I've been in my office at work, my other job, um, every day, so, um, but we are masked. And we are distant. So, um, yeah, so let's just, Mr. Johnson, um, as Ms. Turgeon said. Um, we definitely understand where you're coming from. I believe we all wanna go back to some. Type of normacy, um, even though that's gonna be different now and forever. But if you want to come into the town hall, Mr. Barnes is here every, um, meeting and.
Told me to come over.
I'm sorry?
He told me to come over.
Yep, yep, yep. And I'm here, so, um, we can do that. Okay? So we can, um, put this on the agenda for May and see where we stand, see what the protocols are. Does that go for you, Ms. Johnson?
Sure.
Alright, thank you. Counsel. Oh, your input. Alright, and the next item is, um. The ARPA recovery funds. Um, our. Input sessions for the community. You know, it's, I, I think it's important for us to, we've identified some items. But I think it's important for us to, uh, continue to stay transparent and allow our residents to. Um, provide some feedback or input or even, and even, not or, but and even. Gain an understanding as to what we can do with the money and how we have to, um, spend it or use it. So I think, um, those things are important because we don't wanna say that we haven't given the community opportunity, well. Um, I'm preaching to the choir, but, you know, for, just for the record, we don't want it to be said that we didn't give them an opportunity. Um, to provide input. So, um, Mr. Barnes, do you want to?
Yeah, I had a suggestion. Uh, you're inundated with meetings this month because of budget and you've got. The economic, um, development analysis, um, workshop is on, um, March twenty fourth from, uh, six to eight PM. See, a lot of meetings and I know that, that makes it somewhat difficult. So, um, I was, uh, suggesting to the mayor that maybe the last. Uh, meeting of, that we have, uh, twenty second of March, maybe try to set that up as a trial basis to see if the first. First, like, uh, hour of that, uh, two hour session is an ARPA hearing and people. Um, sign on, give their comments, their input about that, and then you all, of course, continue on with your discussion about budget. So that you don't have to set up another night meeting, um, or activity and then we see how it goes. We're getting such poor participation from people. It's, uh, we had five people sign on for the economic development. Study and no Hispanics Hillary was available to interpret and, and didn't get to do that, but, um. And then they had one more sign on through the two weeks that we promoted it, um, where they could do that. And if you recall, the. The, um, social media survey had three people, um, sign on to participate in, in that. So I don't anticipate a lot of people signing on and we'll certainly try to get the word out. The way we always do through door to door and postcards and constant contact and that. And so we might get more in this case. Um, just because of the visibility, but, um, I'll take suggestions and obviously the mayor will too. About, um, trying to do that in a combination situation.
Um, yeah, I think this is, I, I'm glad that we're thinking about this because I saw that Hyattsville. Has a, has a pretty robust feedback loop in effect for, for their rescue plan funds. Of course, theirs is like substantially more money. It's like almost eighteen million dollars or something crazy like that, but, um, but one of the. You know, I wonder if just having this, a single meeting where we want people to just come to express their ideas to us, whatever is. Not gonna be particularly productive. I wonder if maybe we could in, instead or in addition to, um. Maybe send something out via email that's like, uh, a survey. Um, I can share with you what Hyattsville has done. Where they've, they've sort of asked people about what financial hardships they've experienced as a result of the pandemic or that they've experienced in the past two years. To try to kind of like guide the, the decision makers to have a better understanding of. Of what has really been going on, um. I understand there's some differences between their, you know, population and hours and size and all that kind of stuff, but I feel like. If we were able to set up maybe a form like that. But I feel like if we were able to set up maybe a form like that, that could be a little bit more of a productive approach for us rather than just hoping that we get participation at a meeting where we're asking for people just to kind of, you know, come up with some ideas, particularly given some of like the legal limitations around what we can do with the ARPA funds. So I thought maybe something that's a little more guided could be useful.
The, remember, the social media survey went to every house, the whole survey. And then we went door-to-door and we still only got a few responses. So I don't disagree with you, Sarah. But I don't, I mean, I don't want you all to think that that's going to provide us with 275 responses because we haven't found in our history here and in anything that we ask for that we get great response. We did a survey a few years back and we got four on naming the park over on 47th Avenue. We kind of dropped it because we didn't get a lot of participation. We, we asked for surveys and newsletters and we don't get any response. So, yes, I've seen the Hyattsville work, I obviously receive it. I have saved it because I do think it's good examples to use and potentially try to replicate for us. So I, I think that's something to take a hard look at. But just, I just want to caveat it with saying that we may not get a huge influx of opinion, but any opinion we get will be certainly helpful.
It's just a.
Two thoughts about the ARPA money. One that, you know, if, if we try a two-step process, like step one is, you know, we received this money, we can spend it in these ways, start thinking about it. And then not long after that, maybe a week later, send out the survey. But just sort of prime the pump, if you will. And I think that, and I don't say this in like, you know, oh, people are just self-interested. But I think the, the idea that this is an opportunity for people to weigh in on how we are going to spend money in the town that might impact them is hopefully will interest more people than maybe would be more interested in like a survey about how we communicate with them. I don't know. I mean, I'm hopeful that there, that this might, I don't know, just get people thinking more because they might feel like it's going to impact them more directly or have more of a tangible impact. And that's why I was thinking if we can, again, sort of put something out there to sort of let people know how much money or, and then just a broad categories of what it can be spent on. And then tell them, we're going to ask for your feedback and then ask for it maybe a week or so later. Not too long, but I don't know.
I like that. Yeah, I like that. And I'm definitely, I'm with you on that, Ms. Turberville. And I experienced that where Mr. Barnes is coming from. And Ms. Avery with the sending things out and just not getting the response. And we know that across the board. But I like the idea of a get ready. And as you were talking, some things were going through my head. And I'll kind of talk with Mr. Barnes and Ms. Avery about it. And then we can come back because we, we have to do something in order to get them here. But the other important thing is that we do it if it doesn't work. You know, we, we reached out and so we, we moved forward. So I, I do like that get ready kind of postcard, and I have a thought in my head. So I don't want to prolong this meeting so we can roll to our other meeting, our actual town meeting. Were there any other comments? We can, what we can do, we didn't set any dates. We just know probably April, Mr. Barnes, somewhere. Oh, March 22nd, we're going to, is everybody okay with trying that? It doesn't give us enough time to send out the postcard and then a survey?
We, we can push it there to March 29th or, you know, we, we also have a hearing that night. So that'd give us almost three weeks to get it out and do a teaser and then do a, do, you know, an actual. And then, you know, we can come up with a survey and I'll pass it around so folks can look at it and see what they think. And then we can try to get that in as many hands as possible to give us feedback, so.
That cool with everybody? All right, so all in favor of adjourning this work session, please say hi.
Hi.
Or raise your hand and put your thumbs up. All right.